... the Republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now we'll observe a short moment of silence, and I ask you, while we do that, that you keep in mind our, our men and women of the armed forces who stand to watch 24/7, and our first responders here in Flagler County that take care of us every single day. Additionally, just thank God that we live in the free state of Florida. A moment of silence, please. Thank you. Well, today, we're here to discuss the beach management plan.
Sir, if I could, I don't think that they have full control yet, so we might have to just wait a minute. The mics did come on, but I'm not sure if it's recording yet, or if they're at full capacity. You don't have your presentation screens working behind you yet.
Okay, but you're, you're recording. You are. Okay, cool.
We're okay so far.
Okay, that's good. So we need the screen.
I'm recording. Well, she's recording.
Well, I just got the latest weather report from Jonathan Lord. We expect a one- or tropical storm level issue here. We will evacuate mobile homes. We will open up a, a shelter. One of the schools will be open. County offices will be closed Wednesday. And I, so I believe this school will be closed Wednesday also. Oop, screens are up. There we go.
It's coming online now. It's just starting to boot up.
This chairman just sighed that we also, as usual, we have a hurricane in the area, and there's a full moon.
Full moon.
It just, it just never, you never seem to get that coordinated correctly.
That means it's a king tide, too.
Yeah.
And another eye storm.
Yeah, it is, isn't it? It's another eye. Yeah.
Okay, I think we're ready to start. Ansley, if you'd like to start the presentation. I think you're going to have to control it through your clicker.
Sure. All right.
So, once again, welcome to our, our meeting on the beach management workshop. Ansley is, Ansley Renkey is our first speaker. Ansley, you're up.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for joining us here today, commissioners. It's good to be here for the beach management plan development workshop. So I have with me Chris Creed, our coastal engineering consultant from Olson Associates. I think all of you are familiar with Chris. He has been here before to present some findings in the past. So how did we get here today? A little history to get us all on the same page. Flagler County has recognized that we do need to develop and implement a comprehensive beach management plan for the Flagler County Atlantic coastline. And in November 2019, the Board of County Commissioners came to a consensus to develop this comprehensive beach management plan. In 2021, Flagler County sponsored a beach management study. And this basically identified the needs that the county needs to address to implement a beach management plan. And then about one year ago, Chris Creed was here to brief everyone and present those findings to us. And the findings of the beach management study were intended to serve as a framework to open up conversation, debate, and to develop this plan. And the beach management plan will be adopted by the board, and we will be implementing this, you know, through the county in cooperation with our local stakeholders. So the purpose of today's workshop is to review the findings of the beach management study, and then initiate discussion with the board and the stakeholders who are here to set up a framework for this beach management plan, and talk about the content for the beach management plan. So with that, I will turn it over to Chris Creed.
Welcome, Chris.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, thank you for having me again to follow, to continue our conversation about the ultimate goal of a beach management plan for the county. Just to, and Ansley, thank you, to follow up on some of the things that Ansley said. The purpose is to initiate, to continue this conversation about what these, what the goal is of a beach manager plan. A plan, in my opinion, and offered, this is a thing to think about, is, is a framework under which you ultimately are implementing a larger strategy for beach management. And so it give, it would give the county and staff the opportunity to have directive from the board on how to move forward, whether it's developing the scope of a project, or develop, or seeking funds for that, and other types of funding resources, and whatever other aspects of a total beach management program, phasing, schedules, and things like that, might ultimately be required. And so we want to talk about that, and we use the beach management study that we talked about last year, we presented, and all the findings. And that was intended to start the conversation with some quantifiable information in there to help establish what the scope of a project might be, and how much it might cost. All of it is up for discussion, and there's nothing that can't be changed, or looked at in different ways to ultimately meet the goals of the county. So we'll back up just a little bit and talk about what we've done, what the county has done recently, and this is a graphic. If you've seen the presentation, hopefully you're familiar with most of the slides, and I'll try to just maybe add a little additional comment to each of these. This is a graphic of the work that has been done by the county since Hurricane Matthew. It doesn't include all the planning and, and other things that have been going on with the federal project that is on the left-hand side of the graphic here, down by the Rock River Vetman, and where the Federal US Army Corps of Engineers project will go. These are the, I will call them piecemeal, attempts to restore project-related damage, as it has happened in a reactive-type approach, dealing with your stakeholders, I mean, your cost-sharing partners FEMA principally, and FDEP. But it is a reactionary-type approach to this, more as a, instead of a proactive long-term plan. This is very necessary, and it's been an important part to try to hold the line. But it's been very costly and very time-consuming to do this, and it definitely does not solve a longer-term problem and a long-term sand loss that has occurred over, over the decades here. However, it gives you a depiction of where this has occurred and what the general scope is. If you look to the left side, there's a total summary here, placed volume, that's cubic yards per foot. And if you add it all up together, it would say about 15 cubic yards per foot total. However, that's not, we don't have a 15 cubic yard per foot benefit today. That is, you take 20 away and you put 15 back, so we might still have a deficit because of, it's just not been enough to keep up with what you've been experiencing from Hurricane Matthew and forward.
But we have six cubic yards out there now.
Right, so you're, you're adding it back, but we're still just, you know, barely keeping up with the impact that's happening, which speaks to the need for a longer-term, more programmatic approach. So, and to do it in a much larger scale. Some of, very quickly, some of the objectives, we looked at all 18 miles of the beach management study. We were looking at the entire county at the time. We were evaluating existing conditions that existed at the time. Those have changed now. We looked at historical beach and shoreline and dune change from a longer-term record, so that does incorporate some longer-term storm effects, to kind of come up with what we would, how we would expect future projects to perform. We looked at some concepts in terms of initial restoration in a maintenance interval. We've talked about sand sources. Where's the sand to come from? We know that there's offshore sand, it's a little, maybe cheaper to get than the upland sand. And, and we've looked at those options for the county as well, including that pricing and the alternatives we looked at. We looked at cost, using market conditions and what we're generally familiar with, of what these projects cost typically, both from when they're contracted through the federal government with the Corps, and when they're contracted through communities like yourself, counties and municipalities, and things like that. We've looked at ideas about local funding responsibilities, as well as what those sources might be, and then how to implement these types of projects. And so we developed some alternatives. We used guidance from how much sand had been lost historically, what was the scope of the Corps of Engineers project. We looked at future, the effects of future sea level rise, and we wanted to construct an initial project and maintain it over the life of 50 years, which is a typical planning period for these types of projects, particularly when you're looking at establishing programmatic approaches to management. The construction methodologies, using dredges versus using trucks and bulldozers. With the dredge, we use bulldozers, too. As we continue to talk about is this Kikina rock issue in the northern part of the county, how is that going to affect your ability and the scope of what you're ultimately allowed to do? And then also, what can we do to enhance or establish, reestablish the dune where they've been impacted? Just the rock, to familiarize everybody, where it's located. It's in the northernmost portion of the county, extends about halfway through the Hammock Dunes development, down to what we call about R43. It varies in magnitude and location, and we don't really yet have a great survey of what that rock really looks like. And next, the next important planning step of implementation of a plan, we'll try to get a better grasp on what exactly this is. And, and there are tools and methods for, that are approved for how to do that. And then this is just a couple of photographs to show you how it does vary. We have what we would consider beach and nearshore rock in the northern part, up around Matanzas Shore and Marineland, north of Washington Oaks. And then when you get south of Washington Oaks, it turns into what we call more nearshore rock. And it does vary in time. We have periods of calm, sand comes back on, it disappears, and then we have a storm and it reappears. So it would be considered in some areas what we would call ephemeral rock. It's not a permanent presence. But we, but we don't know yet what that really is.
I, I think you need to take that R43 and a half X and put it at Jungle Hut, because DEP said we can cover the rocks up to Jungle Hut with no, no fine. So I think that you should adjust that picture a little bit. We don't have any permission past Jungle Hut.
Happy to modify the graphic. I, I don't really know.
Just a thought.
Okay. But, you know, what, ultimately, when we go before a plan, you know, a regulatory activity, that we'll have to submit a formal request package in writing, and obviously, we'll get, we'll get the, the response from DEP, as well as National Refishery Service. This is regulate, these, these resources are regulated both by the state and federal governments. And we, we can talk about that more. And I think, I think as it does go further south, it is what is less prominent as you go further south.
Well, that was the issue, Chris, of God uncovered them, and we're just asking to cover them back. But north of Jungle Hut, we can't say that. Those rocks have been there for a long time. But Matthew uncovered, you know, off of Hammock Beach, Hammock Dunes, and up to, all the way up to Grand Mare, and then Jungle Hut. So that was, and they, they agreed with us. So that was why I brought that up. That's all.
The sand source issues with the offshore versus upland, very important work that has been done, based upon direction from the board in the past, since we last spoke. Uplands kind of is what it is. Lots of sand coming out of the Grand Mare, I mean, not the Grand Mare, sorry, Grand Mare, going to Grand Mare, to the Grandin, the, some of the Vulcan mines there, just due west of Flagler, are the most prominent sources that we've been using. Unfortunately, you're competing with the, with St. John's County right now for those as well. So it's important that we continue toward rapid completion of the projects that are currently going on within the county. Offshore's real, we've had some interesting work going on with that since we spoke to you last, in anticipation of ultimately having a dredging project. And the reason, and I'll make a distinction here, that in the boxes, we have a box called Area 3, which is the larger one, and that. And then we have a sub-area called Area 3A, which is the smaller one, where there's a lot of dots. And we've got some black dots and some red dots. And then the color shading, from the greens and the yellows and the oranges, that's the thickness of the sand that we believe is out there. And when I say sand, that would be beach-compatible sand, sand that is suitable for placement on the beaches. And so prior to even the beach management study, there had been work done by the Corps to help quantify what the sand characteristics are like, and they took the black dots. And we have those two smaller boxes delineated in blacks there, black there. One is the federal borrow area that'll be used for the project in City of Flagler Beach next year. And the other, the non-federal borrow area, is a Flagler County borrow area that was, that was identified for use for the rest of the non-federal portion within the City of Flagler Beach. There's Bo and lease agreement for both of these boxes. You're parties to both of that, you're a party to both of those. But what we didn't know, particularly when we wanted to expand beyond just the city of Flagler Beach, into the northern part of the county, we didn't know what the sand was like in the rest of 3A. So within the last six months, we've had a contractor go out, a group called Am Drill from Orlando. They have a big 100-foot-long ship and a coring rig, and they've taken 50 additional cores, and they're under contract to Flagler County, to help quantify how much more might be available there. And we've got a lot of good answers. Ansley has been with me down to Delray Beach to look at the cores, when they were laid out in a warehouse. And we believe now that we have possibly up to, within 3A, possibly up to 20 million cubic yards of sand suitable for placement on the beach available to Flagler County. It is due as off, do, do off, due east of Flagler County, and right now, within the state of Florida, counties are staying in their own sandbox. People aren't crossing county lines to come get other people's sand. And so it's important, this is a valuable resource for you. So as you continue to move forward with a plan, it's important that you know that you have an identified source. Area 3, that could be up to 45 million yards. So you can see in comparison of what we think the total need might be during the life of a 50-year project, we may have enough in borrow Area 3A to meet that need, and we know we have more beyond that. So great findings for, for Flagler County. The next issue will just be developing a project and being able to pay for that sand to come, come to shore, which is the hard part. So sometimes, you have some communities that finding the sand is the hard part. So we've got that box checked. So just as a step back to the, let's talk about our alternatives. And this, we're talking about alternatives, is how much sand we're going to place on the beach, where we're going to place it, and how are we going to place it. We looked at lots of options in the beach management study, from, the, the volume densities changed from around 44 cubic yards per foot down to six cubic yards per foot. The method of placement was from dredge to truck haul, truck haul being bringing it from an upland mine, a lot like what's going on with the dune projects now. And we looked at placing it in varying densities along the shoreline, from your yellows to your pinks to your greens, which means from high density down to low density, all the way down to option sixths, that would be full density all the way through, at that 44 yards a foot. This was before our most recent storms, and so the, the demand and the need may have increased since we did this study. But we really haven't updated that up until this point, because this is still a conversation about establishing a plan. So based upon feedback from the study, we realized that the truck haul is not a favorable approach to continue this program, and we really wanted to emphasize continuing to work, our work focusing off the offshore sand sources. And if there were any truck haul-type work in the green with the smaller densities, we would consider things called stockpiling and rehandling. That is, the dredge would come to shore, pump a big pile of sand in a designated spot, and then it would be rehandled and moved by trucks to other areas. You're not buying the sand from an upland commercial mine, and you're not transporting it 50 miles to the, to the, to the beach. However, there, so there is some cost reduction, but there is cost with the rehandling portion of it. So there is some give and take in that, but it's something we want to continue to talk about.
Chris, did you consider on the stockpiling where, where the pipe would come ashore?
Right.
Because of the rock issue.
And that would be, once, once the rock is mapped, once we really know what we have, then it could be there's possible gaps in it. We just don't, we just don't know right now. And then, and you'll permit what they call pipeline corridors. And you get a permit, you get a submerged lands lease to use it, and you can put your pipe right there, and you have permission to do it. And then you also permit the stockpile. So ideally, there would be multiple gaps, and you could do it in multiple places. So one stockpile is not trying to serve the entire northern part of the county.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Sullivan.
Just, just one very neophyte question, and you can laugh at me after the question. But a lot of the sand that leaves the beach doesn't go far. It's, it's in sandbars, just out in the water, you know, 200 or 300 yards.
It goes to Miami. It goes to Miami.
But there's a lot of sand that just ends up just in front of where the beach is now. Oh, it's covered by water at that point. But apparently, it's really hard to get a whole, you can't just, at low tide, start plowing that stuff back up on the beach, I guess. And things, I mean, I never see that as an alternative as to where to get the sand. And I know it's maybe a stupid question, but I just, just like to know what, why we don't have a, as one of the options, using that sand that's just close by, but in, in, you know, it's come off the beach, and it's out there in sandbars.
Yeah, so there's, there's, there's a couple of things. I'll address this in a couple of ways. One, there's an issue called the depth of closure. And the depth of closure is the point offshore that defines the seaward limit of the active beach, where sand seasonally will go offshore and come back onshore and back. The beach is a dynamic thing. You have a winter profile, and you have a summer profile. But you'll have these big storm events, like a Matthew, and they are so energetic and so damaging to the beach, they will transport that sand beyond the depth of closure. And natural forces will not bring it back. Plus, it's scattered in such a thin layer typically, when it's, it's not, the, the equipment available to move it back on shore is just not available. You can accessing the area, and then actually dredging these really thin sands, as long, because it could be mixing with muds and other things like that at the time. So it's, for dredging in the nearshore area, if you wanted to try to help it from the, the lower portion of the beach back to the top of the beach, that's called beach scraping. And it is a practice that we have used historically in the state of Florida. I've used it right after Hurricane Matthew in South Carolina. But in the state of Florida right now, they don't permit it's used, and that's a lot, mostly because of some bad behavior by people who were doing it illegally back in the 60s and 70s.
So it's more a, a regulation right now?
Hundred percent. Hundred percent. It's a regulation, it's a prohibition by state. We continue the conversation. There are bitter times, like after the storm in Volusia County, in front of some of that, they should have been beach scraping down there, and the state just wouldn't talk about it. So we've lobbied for lots of client, lots of communities to, for that to be a tool that you can use, but we're not, we've not gotten any recent traction. So. Yeah, please, please interrupt me with any questions. Let's go to the next slide here. Oops, back to maintenance. We're, we're using the same assumptions that we made, for the most part, in the future, with this new analysis that we've done. And you'll see why I call it a new analysis. We've come up with an option seven that we're going to talk about, and why we, why it's scoped like that. But we're, we're still sticking with these, the characteristics of those options four, five, and six, really focusing on number five, because we think that's probably, meets a lot of the, kind of in the middle of the, the needs and, and kind of some of the constraints that we need to think about when we put the project together. So option seven, I'll talk about it in what, where there's going to be initial construction. And so we've, we've, we've considered a lot of things. One is the change that has occurred since this past year. We have a, a need for more sand. We have more money now. We've got money from the state that's available to help us that we didn't have last time we had this conversation. How can we best use that? The US Army Corps of Engineers design has changed. They've increased the scope of that project. And so, and we're also looking now at only the northern 11.6 miles as a, as a maintenance approach. That's guidance that we have received in terms of developing this option seven. That's all up for discussion. We can talk, we can go back and change it again, and we can, we can look at it a different way. So this is, again, we're looking for feedback from you guys. We're going to tell you what we did, and if there are things that you want us to look at, we can go back and do that. We're going to assume that all of the sand now is coming from offshore, regardless for this option seven, 100% of it's coming offshore. How we get it to where it needs to be will differ between placing it directly with hydraulic means, or stockpile on it and rehandling. So when I mean stockpile and rehandle, you build this mountain of sand in a specific, specific location, and you have excavators and trucks that are loaded, and they move it mechanically, and they dump it where they're supposed to be. It looks a lot like the activity going on right now, but it's a 100% beach-based activity, and you're not bringing trucks in from the upland. We will seek, we have.
I just have a question.
Go ahead.
But the Army's not going to use that.
No, no, they, they, they are going to be 100% hydraulic.
Okay.
100%. Yep. They're, they're just going to go as fast as they can go. But I would tell you, I'll add that point, and, and the, and the ideas that we've come up with, the stockpile and rehandling, have been used by the Army Corps of Engineers in Brevard County for the exact same reason. And it's a place called the Mid Reach, and we work with Brevard County, helping them implement their federal project. And one of the biggest issues is avoiding this rock in the Mid Reach, and they've come up with a rehandling. They build these stockpiles north and south of it, and they move it in behind that rock mechanically. So the concepts of that, we have implemented into the plan that we're trying to develop here. We know it can be permitted, and we know it can be successful. So that's how we've come up with framing what we've done here. Obviously, we got to recognize that the rock is there. What happens with that, once we get to final design and permitting, we're yet to be determined. But we need to acknowledge that it's there, and it will have an implication on, on the cost, if we have to mitigate for any, or how we build to avoid impacts and avoid mitigation. And again, the, based upon an agreement that we understand is between the city of Flagler Beach and the county, we are going to, in this analysis, assume that once they, all these initial projects are built, the county will be focusing their future maintenance efforts on the northern 11.6 miles. And that's subject to discussion. So graphically, it's much easier to look at pictures. So let's look at the pictures here. This is, to put it in perspective of what the Corps is looking at, something over 100 cubic yards per foot now, very robust. They're having to expand their Bo and lease agreement to get more sand from offshore. So that is the, the brown, over here on the left side, the darker hatching down south of the Flagler Beach Pier. They're what we're calling tapers, north and south of the federal project, that's being funded from a DOT grant you received after Hurricane Matthew, to expand the scope of that to the north and south of the federal project, which will benefit not only the shoreline where the sand is placed, it will also benefit the performance of the federal project by holding the ends, and putting sand at the ends. And then we have this orange shaded area. The scale is, is up, it can be, can be adjusted. For this one, it's about, on average, about 25 cubic yards per foot uniformly along the entire shoreline. It doesn't really matter what the, what, how it's distributed right now, because we're just assuming it's a big block of sand, and we're going to put it in the northern 11.6 miles with between dredging and mechanical truck, rehandling, stockpile and rehandling. So what it looks like ultimately will be part of the design process. And then this was what future management of option seven would look like, is once this big project is constructed, at some point in the future, there'll be a need to replace sand, and the county will only be looking at the northern 11.6 miles. We'll be doing that through monitoring to determine when it is time to do that. And this is the, this is the pre-programmed renourishment. This is what you have in terms of your planning cycle. It does not include storms. And the reason it doesn't include storms is we can't predict when they will happen. But that's why FEMA, the programs through FEMA, and through the, the Corps' FCE program, that's what those companies pots of money are for, is that when you have an unanticipated impact to your infrastructure, and once you build this, this is infrastructure, once you have an unanticipated impact to your infrastructure, those programs come help you put it back to, to the, to the design dimensions.
What, what led you to say future management by the city of Flagler Beach?
It was through conversations we had had in, in developing this option seven with, with the county, the referencing the agreement. And this is what, for an option that we wanted to talk about today, that's what we were asked to do.
Yeah, I had the same, Mr. Chairman, I had the same question, because I always thought with the Army Corps program, and then through the 50 years, there was always going to be a requirement for a match.
That's correct.
At the, at the 10-year increment.
And does that mean that Flagler Beach is going to come up with the money to rehab that?
To be honest, I don't, I don't know what it means.
I, I think that's a non-starter. I think it's got to be Flagler County, it's got all 18 miles.
I, I will say that, it is my understanding that Flagler County does hold the 50-year agreement with the US Army Corps of Engineers. Now, whether that's assigned to the city of Flagler Beach, I don't know.
Even if it was, it'd make any sense to put Flagler Beach in charge. They don't have any money, and they don't have any expertise to manage it. So it's us.
Yeah, so I mean, this option, we could call it option eight. We could go back and do a, we could look at this again, in terms of ultimately what we're, when we get to the bottom of this presentation, we're looking at a number of, how much would this cost to implement on an average annual basis? How much money would Flagler County be looking for, from some sources beyond what they already have access to, to establish this program and maintain it for a 50-year period? And so that, obviously, if you expand back into the city of Flagler Beach, and it's on the county's balance, uh, balance sheet. the county's balance sheet, that number's going to go up.
Yeah, but, wait a second, Chris. If we go look for the amount of money and we don't include Flagler Beach, what are they going to do?
I know, well-
They don't have any money.
That's a, that's a fair question, for sure.
Mr. Chairman, I do remember that the guy who signed that contract was sitting over to your right, Commissioner O'Brien signed the contract. So we're going to go to him, he'll be up there at the state, and we'll just get the money from him, since his name's on the contract.
So obviously, there's a conversation-
Okay, well, I mean, I just think it's a non-starter to put them in charge, because it, no expertise, no money.
Yeah. To be clear, option seven is not a recommendation. Option seven is for discussion, and, and we are-
We've discussed it.
Yeah, and we can discuss it, give us guidance back, and we'll proceed and move forward. But this is, this is to kind of get you thinking on what the scope and scale of these things might look like. I mean, fortunately, right now, we don't have dredges on the beach, and so we can talk about this. This is all spreadsheets and, and graphing, right, right now. So, yeah, future management, implementation issues. So this is important moving forward with my costing analysis. We, we have to assume if we're going to place hydraulic sand by dredge, that, and there's rock anywhere out there that we're not allowed to cover without, without, by permission, they will have to mitigate in some form or fashion. Don't know what that'll be. That'll be for the biologists to figure out, and for us to design the mitigation. But for, if you're, we're, for this analysis, we're assuming if you hydraulically place it, you might have an impact. You will have an impact in this analysis. If you want to avoid the impact, we're going to stockpile and rehandle. That's what this analysis says. So that's important when-
Andy, Mr. Dentz.
So you, you bring mitigation into the, but you've got to have an idea from, of what that looks like. I mean, how do you mitigate for that damage? I mean-
I have an, I have an idea. I'm right in the middle of a mitigation project right now, in South Florida.
Million dollars per foot?
Yeah, so typically, what, what we, you have to, they, in a situation like this, if it's like I think it will be, which it might not be the way I think it, because nobody knows, we haven't surveyed it before. They, they use terms like like-for-like is what, is what's often used, because this is most importantly related to probably essential fish habitat. It's a, it's a resource that fish use, and it goes up through the food chain into fish, and it ultimately affects us. It's regulated under Magnus and Stevenson Fisheries Act. And so we have built mitigation in South Florida. I'm building a mitigation reef in Broward County right now, and it's about 10 acres. And we've built them offshore of Brevard County for rock like this, and they are concrete mats that are, are built by, in an upland concrete yard, and they're loaded on barges and they're deployed in the ocean, beyond where your impact occurs, and beyond where they might be impacted by your activity. It is not a simple process, it is very complicated. It seems crazy when you watch them doing it, that we're spending money on things like that, but that's where we are.
I think I've read or seen something to that effect, I can't remember where, but just was curious, because, right, so those costs play into, how much is a cost to mitigate versus?
100%. I mean, you oftentimes will have to go through, when you, when you go through the regulatory process, you, you value what you think the impact is, and you have to, you have, as part of the, what they call NEPA, National Environmental Protection Act, through that analysis, doing an EIS or an EA, this will probably be an EA, you have to show that you have avoided or minimized your impact to that resource, and justify whatever impact that you're ultimately allowed to mitigate for. And so you have to go through this whole alternatives analysis, and cost is part of that. And so it's, that's part of the regulatory effort. And it's, yeah, it's, it's, as an engineer, it's difficult to watch. I mean, because you're sitting there and, and it's, it's a, it's not an engineering exercise. There's metrics that deal with the quality of habitat and things like that that are considered in there, which I try to stay out of, but that, it's, but that's what you're doing, and you try to go have to build, you build the mitigation to try to replicate that. And then you have to monitor both the impact area and the mitigation to make sure the mitigation's performing the way you expect it to perform, and how different is that from the natural area that you impacted? It's very, it's almost identical to wetland stuff that you see for, in wetland, upland developments, but they, they apply it in the ocean.
That they have banks.
Yeah, well, they won't let us bank in the ocean, we've tried that before, they won't let us bank.
Chris, the stockpiling and mechanical rehandling, does that assume we're putting the sand up, upland of the dune instead of seaward of the dune?
No, no, we'll be putting it on the beach.
It just won't hit the rocks?
Just won't hit, you're going to minimize that impact of the rock will be the goal. Because you're not going to have the water discharge across it, and the sand will be drier, and, you know, it'll be screened, and it won't be screened, but it'll be, in a more stable format once you put it, once you put it on the beach. And it has less risk of migrating across the rock. You know, with a dredge, you're probably going to put it right on the rock.
But there are some places up in North County where we're going to have to put it, put the sand up onto the dune.
Yeah, I, in the way far north, there are going to, it's going to have to happen some of those years.
There's no beach.
Right, there's nowhere to put it, that's correct.
Yeah, the only thing I can think, remember in the inland waterway, I don't know if it's still there, of those big piles of sand up around, across from Marineland was, Marineland is, across intercoastal, remember they had giant piles? But to build those big, high, they'd have to be high piles, there're going to be more than-
They're high and they're long. And, yeah, so you have to permit the actual stockpile, because it's, you have turtle issues even with that, because it's-
And what about the piping? You'll have to kind of push it up there, right? The pipes won't go up so high.
They'll, they'll build a bigger berm, they'll, what they'll do is they'll build a ramp when it starts, and then they'll just start building the berm bigger, and it's like they're building the beach, but it might be twice as high as what you want, and then they'll come by and cut it down, and then they'll have a final. It's, that's why you'll see in my analysis, I've applied an added cost to that, because it's, it's, it's just a lot of work. It's just more effort to do that. You know, it's, and it's unfortunate, you know, that in, in areas where you don't have resources like this, just turn the dredge on and go. And that's what's going to happen in the city of Flagler Beach. You just put as much out there as you want, as long as you've got money, and when they're done, you're done. So this, you know, in the northern part of the county is going to be a more complicated thing. It's just, just the reality of it. And we don't know exactly what that's going to be, we're kind of guessing right now, based upon our best information we have. And it'll all have to adjust, and there may be surprises along the way that you'll have to navigate. So it's, but it's not impossible. It's not impossible, it's just a lot of work, so. And then, one, one thing I, the idea that the northern part of the county and the southern part of the county might be managed differently, kind of brings up the ideas like, well, if what we do in the northern part of the county, because up in, in the beach manager study, we were assuming that, we were looking at all 18 miles, and the only time that we were going to do anything was when the dredge from the Corps project showed up, we were going to piggyback off their dredge, get all that bit, and we were going to take full advantage of it. Well, now the two might be separated, and this and that. And this is a worthwhile exercise to talk about. And, and one thing that my, we've always questioned, the Corps' re-nourishment interval being 11 years. That comes out of a planning study, and we've always wondered, is that just too long? Typically, beach nourishment projects are have, are re-nourished every six to nine years, with an average around seven to eight. 11's a long time for a beach nourishment project. So in this analysis we've done right now, we say, what happens to the cost if we go to six years? Because you're, and we're going to pay independently a MOB cost for the northern part of the county, then, then the southern part of the county. Let's add those costs in too, and let's see what happens to the project. And so the, when you go from 11 years to six years, that capital cost, you're, in this analysis, we're assuming $4.7 million for a MOB. That is a fixed cost. It, it doesn't change regardless of how big the project is. That's why typically you benefit from building larger projects, because you take advantage of that investment. And so when you, and you look in the economic planning horizon, the more times that 4.7 hits the analysis more frequently, you just, your overall, and your average annual cost will go up. And so it's worth looking at to see how that affects things. I think it's important for everybody, a picture's great to, to understand how these projects are built. If you've never seen it, it's a fascinating thing, particularly with the hydraulic dredging process. There'll be some, the Corps is about to redo St. Augustine Beach over the next couple of months. I think the dredge has actually started, they've started mobilizing. So if you want to, they'll start working, stay in touch with maybe staff, and, and maybe go up there and see what, see how it works, and see what their contractor's doing. And this is, you have a dredge, this is, this is the way Flagler will be built, it's a, it's called a hopper dredge. It has sail, it is a ship with a, with a hole, with a hull, and it goes offshore, in this instance, about 12 miles, it fills with sand, comes back to a pre-deployed submerged pipeline between the dredge and the beach, hooks up to it, pumps the, pumps its load out. It is, it is fluidized with 20, 80% water, 20% sand, that's how it moves it. And it hydraulically pumps it, the big, the big engines and pumps on the dredge, pump it through the pipeline to the shore, and along what we call a shorepipe, down to the discharge point. And you can see it, it's like something coming out of the end of a garden hose, but it's a mixture of sand and water. The sand quickly falls out of suspension, if it's good sand. But there are some fines, what we call the finer material that will not fall out of suspension quickly. And once it, once this discharge is here, the water has to get back to the ocean. So it, that carries it back to the water, and if there's any suspended materials in it, it carries those along with them. And you can see these turbidity plumes that are out here. And ultimately, that will fall out of suspension, and if you have a resource out there, it can accumulate on it. So that is the possibility. This is why, this will be a concern in the regulatory process on what that process will have if there's rock present, with unknowns at this point. So we would want to maximize this process, right? We would want this, this is the most cost-effective way to build a beach, we want to take this as far as we possibly can. Alternatively, the slower but much cleaner process is to bring it in when it's already kind of got all this, these materials out of the system, a lot of the fines have run off, where there are no resources, and we move it mechanically, and you just dump it into the material here, and it doesn't run off across whatever the nearshore area. So these are the two types of techniques that can be used. So getting back to my assumptions for the cost, which we're about to get into, the initial, the initial project is what we're, we're going to build everything, we're going to assume, we're going to build it all at one time, which that might not happen, but for this, we're assuming that it does. And then in the future, we're only going to maintain the 11.6 miles to the north. In the analysis, this is simply putting that volume back on the same intervals that we're already talking about, and just seeing what those numbers look like. It's, it's that simple. We're going to assume if we're, we're going to use hydraulic dredging method, we're going to impact 10 acres of rock, just a total assumption. And, but if we use the stockpiling and rehandling, we're going to impact zero rock. We're going to assume the Corps is using right now 4.7 million in their cost estimate for the dredge MOB to MOB. If we're placing it hydraulically, it's that $14 to $18 estimate by dredge, $50 a yard if we have to stockpile it and rehandle it. These, these, these costs are consistent of what we've seen in Brevard County. And then just some assumptions about planning, engineering design, a contingency, and then a monitoring cost of $500,000 per year. Seems like a big number, but if we get into hard bottom impacts and mitigation, that number could double. So it's another thing to consider, and I'm involved with that right now in South Florida. So it's, it's shocking how expensive it can be. So real quick, I know we're kind of going along here, but it's important in this analysis to look at this graphic. Let's just go to the seven, option seven with the 11 years no MIT, which is no mitigation, and explain what that means. We are placing, if you compare those first two options for the 11 years, the, the top one we're placing more hydraulically of the total volume of sand than we are stockpiling and rehandling. And that means that if you go to the far right, that means we're going to put in a cost for impacts of hard bottom. Then if we do the stockpiling, when, or if we, you know, we, for the no mitigation, we have no mitigations, but we're going to, it means that we're going to have to handle more of it by stockpile and rehandling. So the total volume is the same, but the cost is going to be different. Either we're going to pay for mitigation, or we're going to pay for more expensive sand for part of it. And coincidentally, the two costs turn out to be about the same, as it, I had to look at it about 10 times to make sure it was right, but that's the way it worked out. And the same for the six-year re-nourishment interval, the same concept there. And even in the future, you can see that these, and, and the mitigation occurs once. Once you establish your project footprint, every time we come back and, and re-nourishment in future, if, if you've permitted what you're doing, you don't have to re-mitigate, would be the goal. So it's a one, one-time deal.
Say that again.
You would not have to mitigate in the future.
Once you have those things built out there.
Once you have it done in the beginning, you operate inside of what you've already mitigated for. And so when you have a re-nourishment event, six or 11 years later, you don't, you don't have to mitigate again. So there's no cost for future mitigation. So here is the nuts and bolts of what we're doing right now, and there's a couple of point, things to point out that we need to consider while we, as we advance the conversation. So regardless of what we do here, mitigation, no mitigation, because we're paying, either, we're either paying for mitigation or more expensive sand. It's about $100 million project, total, in this scenario. We know we have about $18 million from the Corps, and we have about $14 million from DOT. The, this $18 million from the Corps and the $14 million from DOT is going to be used in the city of Flagler Beach for the federal project and the two tapers. So what we're really looking at for the 11.6 miles at the north are, is how much money. We have 40, we know we have $41 million, round number, from the DUP supplemental money that came out after the storms, plus the FEMA CATG money that we have identified that you're eligible for. But if, in order to build the project, this option seven, to the scope that we've, what we've assumed it to be, we're still short for money because we haven't paid for mitigation, or we haven't paid for the more expensive sand to avoid impacts to rock. And so, again, these are following our assumptions, that we know there's going to have to be some additional cost incurred to ultimately meet this goal if we want the, a large project built in the northern part of the county. So if there're no, if there's no additional money, and the only other source right now, unless it comes out of the legislature or something in this next, you know, and, you know, the, the 11.6 miles is not ready to go to construction, and we might still be two years away. If you go through, so you may still have a couple of years to generate some more money. But right now, with today's conditions, this is what we got. So if there's no more money added, particularly under the Flagler County column there, then the scope of the project would have to be adjusted in some form. I don't know what that is yet, but it would just make sense that if you have, don't have enough money to build it, it's going to have to be smaller. And so there, there'll, there'll be some flexibility in that, clearly. I like to put the caveat at the bottom again, this is a planning exercise only, and this is all subject to change. But this gives you a framework and/or a magnitude of what we're talking about, and what some goals might be to generate some additional funds here, if through the legislature or other means. Any questions with that, what I consider to be a pretty controversial slide?
Well, my, my question is, it's a lot of money, but no matter how you look at it, is there any, any thoughts about just doing pieces of the 11 miles?
There, yes, you can, yes. There, there are definitely options on how to do that. I mean, it's, one thing I think has been shocking in this exercise, when we looked at the 18-point miles, rarely has a community gone out and said, hey, we want to go restore the whole 18 miles, and went, you know, right, right out of the gates. People have done it kind of incrementally over time, and it builds over time, so it's not quite as like, say ripping the Band-Aid off. And so, yeah, there's phasing it. You could definitely, where are your priorities? With, with a goal that hit one now and hit one three or four years from now? And so those are things that we've not talked about yet with you, or, or even staff, about what that might look like. And it's, yeah, and, but we can, we can, we definitely look at, look at priorities, and what are, building, building the sections out with a dredge where there's no rock. You know, we know that's going to be an easy permit to get, a really easy permit. You can just expand it up to the southern end of the rock and, and keep on going. Once you start introducing the rock into the conversation, everything's going to slow down, and it's going to get expensive. And so that is another way to potentially look at it.[1724.73] Or, you know, prioritize, minimize the amount of, of rock impacts and, and, and the amount of stockpiling and rehandling initially. See how it works. Maybe that's not the way to go. I mean, we think it is right now, but it could be that there could be other problems with that that we don't yet understand. But it'll, those will be decisions as a community on how you might want to proceed.
In each phase, if you phase things, you have mobilization for each of those that add to the cost.
Yes, you will have a mobilization. But you can, you know, we can attempt, you can, you can attempt to piggyback off other, you know, regionalization is a word the state likes to use. You can help, you can get extra points from, from their funding of the program if you try to work with other communities. If a dredge is in the, in the area, could you get a better price? And there are more dredges coming online in the U.S., which is helping pricing a little bit, but they're unfortunately just, the reason they're coming online is because there's more and more work. So you're still competing with a lot of the same stuff. I can come back to any of these if you guys like. So, so for future costs, when, every time we come and do a renourishment event, we're focusing on the 11.6 miles in this, in this analysis. So there is no Army Corps money, there is no DOT money moving forward. And the, and the only, the only people or entities where the money will come from will be DEP or Flagler County in, in whatever form that comes within the county. So for example, at some point either at 11 years, the price for a project, and the reason there, although there's no mitigation in the future, remember where we didn't have mitigation, we're kind of handcuffed to the, the construction approach. So we're going to be spending more for that sand to continue to protect the rock. That's why it's at 49 million for the 11 years, no mitigation, 35 to 49 million. So if you paid your money upfront for mitigation, your future cost of events are less. And then if you have to do it every six years, you're still placing the, this analysis assumes a, a, a uniform loss rate of sand through time. And so if I come back every 11 years, I place this big volume of sand. If I come back every six years, it's about half. So I'm not placing the same amount of sand every time if I come six years as I do when I come 11. That's why the numbers are less. And that's the distribution in the, in the right side columns there of how that, what, what you would be eligible for and, and how this, this analysis, how I came up with this is in the northern part of the county, you can see we currently don't have much eligibility from other cost-sharing partners because of this critically, critical erosion designation. The pink areas indicate where you currently are designated as critically eroded. So you're only eligible for state cost-sharing in those areas. The area in the northern part of Beverly Beach and Painters Hill, in the southern part of Painters Hill, we've, we petition the state every year to fill this gap. And they have given us feedback that once a formal plan is in place and the county's moving forward, there's a continuity of management argument between these two gaps right here that, so that would likely be filled as an area that would be determined critically eroded and eligible for state cost-sharing. But they're unwilling to make that determination until a formal plan is implemented. So kind of have that in our back pocket. There is a little, you know, the pink could grow a little bit. And we have that in writing from the state as, within the last three or four months. So that, that's good. But then we have the rest, the Hammocks area, up Sea Colony and Matanzas Shores, still struggling to, to become eligible for state cost-sharing in those areas. So that's where the load is going to be carried by the local community for, for funding, funding the larger project. And again, we're just, we've got this, but you can see in down in Flagler Beach, I mean, we've got lots of good eligibility in that area, which is the most eroded area up until recently. It's all pretty bad now, but historically, that is the most eroded area. So here's, we get to this equivalent cost per year, boiling all that down. But this, we, we, for this analysis, and this is the future maintenance, maintenance cost, and the reason there's not an Army Corps cost or a DOT cost, when I did this, I annualized it over the 50 years. I ignored the first year. I ignored year zero. Those costs, we assume we have the money in place. We got all our grant money, we got the core money, we got DOT money. If there is additional money that the county has to generate, we might want to include that in here, but right now we haven't. So this is what, once the projects are built on an annualized basis, this is what it would cost. So that, from planning, you would need to set aside somewhere between about three and four and a half million dollars a year. That would be the goal. Obviously it wouldn't.
Why is there a distinction between mitigation if we don't have to mitigate again?
That's because there, there's a higher cost for the construction method in the future because we're going to, we're going to be stockpiling and rehandling. We couldn't switch to, if we've, if we've not mitigated for that rock, we are, we're going to be stuck with the stockpile and rehandling even for future renourishment events. Because if you were to expand the hydraulic into an area where, where you didn't previously have the hydraulic dredging, you might have additional mitigation requirements. So there's a more cost associated with the, the construction technique.
You're saying if we have to mitigate, it's cheaper?
Over time, it does, in this assumption here. Yeah, because you're, you're spending more on, you, you got more expensive sand in the future. You're that $50, you got more of that $50 a yard sand. This is, yeah, that's what it's suggesting, if, the, the, yeah, it could work out that The devil's in the details and all this.
Understanding it's $50 sand, when, when you, when you have no mitigation and you have to move the sand from piles, those piles are still coming from the dredge or are they coming from trucks?
Dredge. The dredge, I'm sorry, yeah. The piles would be.
None of this is trucked in sand.
None of this is trucked in sand.
That extra cost is just movement.
Yes, it's, yes, every time, you know, in construction, every time you touch something, it costs more money. So you, it, there's a lot.
And that's current costs. That $50 could go up.
The Brevard County, and last time they stockpiled and rehandled with the dredging, the, the, the Bara Site was about 15 miles away. And they would build these massive stockpiles and it was about 50 bucks a yard. I went back into the cores, the bid pricing to get these numbers. And I'm happy to share all that stuff with you guys, how we came up with these assumptions. It's, and we, and, and then we try to make sure that we're not underestimating any of this, that we're, we'd like to be as conservative as we can in terms of guiding you guys on, on how to make some decisions here. But these are all, I mean, and, and it's a range of, of costs that in the big picture is, it always keeps zeroing in on these numbers, you know? And last time we were talking, I think five to $7 million a year because we were all 18 miles. But it all, it, it keeps zeroing in on these numbers and you're looking at somewhere between three and five to $6 million per year, depending on what you, what you choose to do.
After the first.
I think if, if you went up to the six to seven, you're including the first if you analyzed all that stuff, so. If you, that, if you go back to the beach manager study, I'm kind of going back to that report now.
On one of your, on one of your charts, could you show us where the FDOT seawall project ends? Because that's to me, because I think there's a gap between.
There, there, there is a gap.
Army Corps and.
There, there is. Let me see if I can find one that doesn't make everybody dizzy. Oh, yeah. Do we have another behind us?
Well, we can do it afterwards. It seems to me there's, it doesn't match all the way.
There is a gap. I mean, it's.
And that's, that's part of the non-federal.
Right, so I can go back.
Which is sort of fun.
Forgive me, don't watch the screens. I'll get back. Hold on a second here. Here, here we go. And it's not on here.
Well, it doesn't even come this far.
The recent project, yeah, but it doesn't have the cores project on there. Oh, yeah, can you see it? So if you can, if you can look, the, the secret wall is, is typically, you see the R monuments right above this? It is located, give me the exact numbers here, between 65 and 69. So right there, it, it straddles the town of Beverly Beach and.
Oh, it's different. That Seacant Wall's there already.
Yeah, that.
I'm talking about the, the FDOT project that is going to be a seawall at some point in Flagler County.
Oh, that's, that's, my, my understanding, and I might be wrong because I've not been directly involved in, is south of the project. It's between the southern taper.
Yeah, but I, I was curious if you know which, which monument it was going to go to, because that will affect what it's going to cost for us to do the non-federal project.
We may have to get back with you exactly on that.
Okay, let me know. That'd be great.
Okay.
It's not critical. Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. O'Brien.
I just, this probably a question for, for Amy or finance, just an approximation of what our run rate is on the beach renourishment bucket from TDC collections, tax collections.
What the annual number is. Here she comes.
So Amy, what's the annual contribution of the bed tax to the beach nourishment?
Amy Lukosik, Tourism Development Director. For upcoming fiscal year, we are projecting $850,000. And that is before all of our expenditures, tax collector, bank fees.
And some of that's encumbered for what?
Correct.
Thanks, Amy.
All right. I'll try to wrap up. We, we're getting close to the end here, so then we can start the conversation, expand it anyway. So, yeah, so funding opportunities, this has changed a whole lot since we talked last time. We are currently working on that funding study. We working with our subconsultant on the survey that's going to go live, hopefully within the next month. And that will be a countywide survey to understand the interest in the beach program within the.
Remember, we're going to see that before you go out with it. You're going to let?
Yes, yeah, yeah.
At, at a minimum, let me look at it.
Yeah, we will, of course.
Okay.
Of course. Yeah, so, and it's, right now, we're just working on content and how it's going to be advertised.
Okay.
So of course, we'll definitely, we'll let you hit the go button. I'm not, because I'm not quite sure how it's going to work. It's lots of conversations over my head with that. So, so when we were here last, again, I'll hit this again, the immediate next steps were identified in the beach management study. You, you guys have been very proactive up until this point and even including today on the things that have, have been completed and things are underway and things that still need to be done. Most critically at this point is the commission, the commission, you commissioned the funding study and it's underway. The offshore sand search study is very important. Going back to the first one, the, the program administration who will lead, you have indicated that you're going to lead the program. I think there's still a debate on how, what the scope of that will be at 18 miles or 11.6 in the future. And so just the, the direction from that will be helpful. The parking and access inventory survey, that is going to be, have multiple benefits, not only from understanding what you currently have and what your eligibility is now, but what you might be eligible for from both the state and the feds in the future. That still needs to be completed. My understanding that a request has been sent to the core to, for them to seek funding to expand, do a new federal feasibility study to expand, potentially, hopefully expand the scope of the federal project and your eligibility for cost-sharing from that entity.
Chris, then we, you have on your data collection to expand offshore. We, we just did that, correct? Are you saying?
It's yellow, meaning it's underway. The report's not finished yet. So the core, the cores have been collected, the sand sources, the sand samples have been collected from the cores and they are in the lab. We need to basically write the report, get it back to you.
Okay.
So you have that in your back pocket. That's why it's yellow. Yeah, green means completed, underway is yellow, white, to be done. So when we get down, the, the last thing that we'll need to do too, and it's something that's missing from this slide, before we can expand into the 11.6 miles, currently there's not a permit to place sand up there by dredge. There, there, there are two permits up there to place sand in the dunes using truck haul methods. So the, the heavy lift of a large dredging project in the northern part of the county and the permits for that need to be completed. That needs to be initiated and it needs to be completed. And time is of the essence, in my opinion, so that it is going to be a long process to, to get those permits. And it will require both DEP and US Army Corps of Maintenance your permits and a, and expanded loan lease agreement. You'll need to get a new bit lower loan lease agreement. So getting down to what we would ultimately be seeking from the board to, and these are suggestions, these can be debated and recrafted and pick different words, but so, but we had to come up with something, have a conversation today. I like to use action words. Acknowledge that it's important for the, the county have a beach management program. I think you, everyone agrees with that. We want to restore, enhance, maintain, preserve and protect the beach and dune. That is your protective resource. It provides recreational benefits, environmental benefits, as well as storm damage reduction benefits. We want to maximize the amount of sand that can be placed within regulatory and financial constraints. More is better, but we understand that we are controlled by both regulatory and financial limitations. But we do want to maximize those opportunities and being smart about how we design the projects, permit them and, and contract them so we can get good pricing. Protect the life and property of, of the community from all the, the things associated with living on the coast. Provide the habitat for all the different creatures that live in the dunes and benefit from the dunes, they benefit for us as well. And protect the nearshore hard bottom habitat. It is a marine resource unique to your community. You have a state park where people love to come see it and it is a, an important resource and, and very unique. Want to prioritize our recreational benefits. Healthy beach system and recreation goes a long way toward, toward enhancing your economy. Seek to expand the public access. Their benefits not only to the public, but also to the community at large in terms of being eligible for, for funding opportunities, both from the state and federal governments. And establish, obviously, that will also require the, the dedicated funding source, which we continue to reiterate and I'm sure you guys are fully aware of. And I mean, we need the easements to build the projects. And I like the last one, I kind of touched on it a little bit when I'm talking about the Bara Site. The Bara Site is also a unique resource for you. It's important, if you ever find someone thinking about, you know, an adjacent community or elsewhere, thinking about coming to use your sand source, make sure that you protect this resource and this, that, that first and foremost, it is here to benefit Flagler County. And to take that position would be recommended. So next steps, identify and confirm the affected stakeholders and the goals and priorities. And incorporate these findings into the plan that will be adopted by you. And you would adopt it and direct staff to go initiate all means and efforts possible to, to implement it successfully. Obviously, our coordination with you does not end with a, with a conversation today. And it also, a beach management plan adopted today doesn't mean it can't change. And so we could always, it's a living document and it could be something that you set some initial goals and based upon how it starts to unfold, as you start to navigate the very complicated process, you can change it and you can adjust it to how it might best suit you. And so these are things to think about and for you guys to consider for us to help you
Thank you, Chris.
I don't have any additional comments, so thank you, Chris. And I'll leave it open for questions.
Commissioners, who wants to start? Dave, you have?
Yeah, just, just in general, on the overall study, I, I feel a lot better hearing it, hearing it this time, the stockpiling issue. So we now have to, as a board and the staff, have to think about, I mean, financing has a big deal to do with this. I, the more I think about it, I like my idea of prioritizing within, within, within the study. I mean, we have beaches that we'd like to preserve, Bay Drive and, and Malacampa, where there are parking lots already. So maybe you just, you start, you prioritize. You know, if you said, what's the most important, you know, you just start, start there. And I, I also agree with you that it's 18 miles. I mean, we got to look at it as an 18-mile problem for the county. And, and I like the idea of prioritization, doing a little bit at a time. I mean, I know that creates all kinds of other problems as far as dredgability and, you know, and all that kind of stuff, but I think we're going to have to prioritize. I don't think there's enough money to do $100 million upfront.
Andy.
Do we have, or do you have a summary of the different Atlantic counties that, and their different stages of beach management and dredging and, and projects? Because I know I've, I've been to Nassau County, I've seen theirs up toward Fort Clinch, but haven't been down south to Brevard or others and just didn't know if, you had a summary of where they are, where we are in relationship to where they are? Because I know we kind of got late in this.
And we can give you, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Well, I was going to say, I go to the, I could tend with Chris to these beach management conferences and where we were singled out as the only county that doesn't have a beach management plan. That was hard to hear, that one, that one commission. But, but what's remarkable down there, Andy, is they've been doing it for years and, and they, they, they took it on themselves. They got in the game with their own money early on. And correct me where I'm wrong, Chris, but there's, most of those places down there have got a, a bank now of money where they can just write a check. It's time to re-nourish, write a check.
Getting started is a hard part.
That's getting started is a hard part.
So I would just would like if you've got that information available to share of where they all are, when they started, kind of a summary of, of their progress and how, and their funding plans, just. funding plans, just to get a glimpse of what's occurring.
Yeah, we can work together, to put together a summary. There's, and I've shared a lot of this with Ansley before, a lot of these communities have websites that explain the history of their program and what they're doing and how they manage it, but, as Commissioner Hanson said, the Florida Shore and Beach Preservation Association is a statewide lobbying group for all beach interests, for all coastal communities. They are supportive in the legislature for the $50 million pot of money that becomes available, that you're eligible to seek, with a local share to contribute to part of that. And so, we have two meetings a year. We have, one is coming up in Fort Lauderdale in September, that is more of the policy, and, but it's, that one is being merged with a resiliency program also, but there's also coming up in February, there'll be the tech conference, and that will be in the Embassy Suites in St. Augustine Beach, so it's very convenient, and encourage all of you to attend.
How many county commissioners attend those?
We know Flagler County's.
I'm the only one.
I went to one, when you couldn't go down.
Yeah.
It's really interesting to have conversations in the hall and to listen to some of the presentations, just, and see what other people are doing. It's been going, it was established back in the 50s, and it is, it's a great organization and a great way to network and hear what other people are doing, but we, in the meantime, we'll put together a summary for you.
Donnie, any questions?
Just, and again, I apologize for my ignorance, in terms of stockpiling, is the intention to be able to stockpile for the long term? In other words, if the dredger's shares mobilized, we can stockpile enough material that that would be available when we go to do the first re-nourishing, or if we have an emergency situation?
We'll be really restricted, because the stockpiling will have to occur on the beach, and so, it will have to be, it's temporary. It's temporary for that event, because we have turtle issues, we have other things, you've got to bring it back to what the natural beach shape should look like, so you can, get permitted for a temporary impact while you build the stockpile and work it, but then it's over. We won't have that for a rainy day.
So it's not like the fine spoil sites that we're talking, that we have?
Not in this instance, no, it's not.
Big issue is, the conundrum for all of this is how to pay for it.
How to pay for it, yeah. Any other comments or questions? Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And I'll open up to public comment. Anybody in the public wish to comment on today's presentation? Mic is now open. John. Mr. Gass.
John, thank you, Chairman, and thank you for the time. My name is John Gass. I'm with the Hammock Dunes Shoreline Management Committee, and speaking today for the Hammock Dunes Owners Association, and I think you all know, we've been at this for some time in our community. I'll try to keep my remarks to the three minutes, Greg, but first, I wanted to thank the commission, because I think Chris alluded to it in his comments, this group has done a lot in the last 18, 24 months, in terms of advancing the ball on the whole area of the beach management for Flagler County, and it's a long list of things. The beach management study that you commissioned, the coring program that Chris described on identifying the offshore sand resources, the local funding study, which is underway, the Flagler Beach project is now on a path, it looks like it's going to start sometime in the spring of next year. You've requested a new three-by-three study with the Army Corps of Engineers. You're executing an emergency sand project across the northern part of the county, which has really been going well, and that's been a massive project, and your staff has done very well in managing that project, and we've been very happy working with them as it's come through Hammock Dunes. And importantly, you executed a perpetual easement with our community earlier in the summer, and I'll come back to that later, but we understand there are other communities along the northern shoreline that are also in advanced stages of developing perpetual easements as well, and those are things that you will need as we go forward. But today, we're talking about the next big step that needs to be taken, and that, of course, is embarking on a full-scale, long-term, comprehensive beach management plan for Flagler County. And, you know, I think the condition of our shoreline as it stands today, together with the impending approach of Adelia, just puts in stark terms the challenge that we're facing now, and that we need to address, and we need to address immediately. We had a chance, some of us involved with the shoreline work in Hammock Dunes, to review the presentation that Ansley and Chris made today, and we have some feedback on what we read through it. Now, Chris has answered a lot of the questions that we had as he's gone through his proposal, but I would just say, the feedback, you know, goes kind of like this, first and foremost, we've got to have a beach management plan, and, you know, we've been talking about it, but we need to get on with it, and we certainly support the suggested objectives for that plan that Chris went through, along with the next steps. Those are all things that we believe need to be done. We see option seven for what it is. We think it's a good starting point. It's a reasonable basis to start discussion of a plan, but we recognize, when you get into the detailed engineering, looking at this thing for the various parts of the coastline, you get into the permitting activities, that scenario is going to evolve, and of course, financing, of course, will affect that as well, but we think that's a good starting point, as we read through it. We really think the inclusion of a six-year re-nourishment cycle is something that needs to be looked at, and when you think about 11-year cycle in light of what's happened in Flagler County over the last seven, eight years, you can tell 11 years isn't really a realistic scenario to think that you're going to be able to administer the shoreline on. So, we had some questions around how the estimated sand volumes were calculated for that particular case, but Chris has addressed what his assumptions on erosion rates, and there's no estimates of predicted major storm activity in the midst of those six years, and for the reasons that he stated, so I think he's answered that. But we do think it would be useful for the commission to understand, as Chris explained, there's no cost benefits in here shown for things that will come up in the middle of this six-year cycle, if you have a major named storm event and emergency funding is available. If you, if, you know, you're able to get additional funds because you've increased public access, those sort of things. I understand why you don't put them in the base plan, but I think the group ought to understand, there will be other funds likely available, based on experience, that will help mitigate some of this cost that you are going to be looking about, looking at. We think the scenario of option seven is a realistic order of magnitude, the cost of implementing a plan regardless of what scenario you had picked. I think that was, that was shown in the beach management study. You're at $100 million bucks for the initial project, plus or minus, you know, a few million on either side, so that's, that's the hurdle that we're looking at, and we understand that, but we think the scenario he's picked was a, was a good proxy for what we're talking about. The local contribution numbers are huge, and I know they're going to be a challenge for the commission to deal with, and it's going to require some tough choices, and I don't know how to help you with that, other than to say, I think that certainly a lot of the residents along the shoreline recognize that there's going to be contributions they're going to have to make. At the same time, coming back to my point, I think recent experience shows there will be potential opportunities for additional sources of funds, some funds on top of any local revenue generation that you all decide to implement, emergency funding for named storms, expanded eligibility for state and federal grants, pursuing expanded public shoreline access, and of course, the potential for a US Army Corps of Engineer 50-year project, are things that are there, and understanding those potential impacts, I think, would be useful for you to know and to ask for. We assume the detailed engineering of the dune, the beach, and the seabed designs will be based on actual local conditions. In other words, we have a scenario we're looking at for this initial presentation workshop, but each individual segment of the shoreline is going to have its own issues, require its own work as part of the business, beach management plan. Hammock Dunes is still hopeful that we can use a hydraulic dredge, sand placement for our entire shoreline. As you saw, the base case here, the scenario that Chris presented, it sort of stops halfway through, but we still are hopeful that with your work with the FDP, that we might be able to get by with having a full hydraulic dredge without any mitigation costs on that segment of our beach, and we recognize this will only be determined once we get into the permitting for the JCP, but, and regardless of how that turns out, we'll support the maximum permissible sand volume. That's what we'd like to see. I also just want to reinforce what Chris said about the JCP approval process. I think 12 to 18 months is a minimum, based on our own experience with an easy JCP. This one will likely take longer because of the rocks and other things, and it really needs to be started quickly with your coastal engineer, if we're going to be in any position to try to tie in with what's going on at Flagler Beach. That work would have to start almost immediately, so I just mentioned that. I talked about the perpetual easement that the county and HCOA signed earlier this summer. It's important to remember, our perpetual easement is underpinned, is based on the assumption that there's going to be a long-term beach management plan from the county, and that includes the possibility that perhaps a US Army Corps of Engineer project for part, or, you know, all of our section of the beach could happen, that's still to come, but the perpetual easement is assuming that that is going to happen, that you, this body is going to do that. You know, it grants administrator status to the county for monitoring the conditions of our beach and our dunes, and administering the project for the periodic maintenance and repair of the Hammock Dune shoreline, in accordance with engineered designs and profiles. So, the point I'm trying to make there is, is as we go forward on a beach management plan, it's going to be important that we consider the perpetual easement. So in conclusion, here are our thoughts, summary. We need to get on with a long-term, comprehensive beach management plan as the next critical step. With the feedback, we urge the BOC to approve contracting for the preparation of a long-term plan. In parallel with this, we support the county immediately contracting for the preparation of an application for a joint coastal permit to enable a dredge project for a major beach and dune re-nourishment dredge project for the northern part of the county. We need to move the local funding study forward more quickly. We want to continue the pursuit of a new three-by-three US Army Corps of Engineers study with a target completion for 2026. So I hope the feedback is helpful, and I appreciate the time.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi, Jim Olssmer. I'm with the Ocean Hammock Property Owners Association, and back in the wake of Hurricane Matthew, I, along with a couple of other people in this room, hammered out the arrangements with Prior County Administrator and Al Hadid for agreements to do that project. So I've got hundreds, if not thousands, of hours invested in this, this whole topic. Mr. Gass's comments were, as usual, well-put, informative, and diplomatically presented, and I'm not going to repeat any of those. One of the things that did strike me in the presentation, and I know it was for discussion, was that it seemed like there's too quick of a tendency to maybe not roll over, but give up on the idea of challenging whether or not this hard bottom can be, really requires mitigation. I mean, I've been here since 2005, and I can remember riding my bike from the northern part of Ocean Hammock on the beach, all the way to Flagler Beach and back. All the rocks were covered up, 70% at least of our 1.1 miles rarely has rocks exposed. There are areas where there is more of it, so, you know, being able to overcome that barrier of being able to dredge and place sand there to a more robust level is an objective, I think, that's worth pursuing. In all the communications to our community, I've told them about the beach management plan, I've said it's not going to be cheap, get ready, and I think that's the message we have to, you know, send out to, you know, the rest of the people who are going to have to help, you know, with the local payment on this. And, one other thing about, as far as doing prioritization, I get a little nervous when I hear that, because we are very much concerned about protecting the homes and welfare of the people in our community, so while maybe a park might be a priority, Bay Park, Malacampa, the parks do not pay taxes, and, you know, we're the people who are going to be helping footing the bill, so I want to make sure that whatever approach is taken, takes into consideration all the people who could be affected by any flooding events. And, oh, last but not least, one of my reasons for coming here was to have a sidebar with Attorney Hadid, and we're just about ready with our perpetual easement document, we've been working on it. We fashioned it after the Hammock Dunes one, we think it's in great shape, so we'll be setting up a meeting to.
Good. Look forward to that. Yeah, thank you, Jim. Thank you. Mr. Davis. Do you?
Can I use the camera?
We said, wait one minute? Okay, now you can.
I'm Steve Davis. Been involved with the county for several years since Matthew, I live on the beach. The exhibit that's displayed here is showing the increase in sand volume placement, the Corps of Engineers project and Flagler Beach, but a decrease in what option five would have been in the northern 11.6 miles, at a time when an increase is important. Overlayed on that, you can see a shading of red in the middle of the yellow. That is, in fact, the sand placement, historical sand placement that was in another exhibit Played the existing projects. The scale is so different that if you, if you make it the same scale as the Corps of Engineers project and option five or option seven, it appears that option seven is close to the emergency sand that's been placed over the last several years, all of which is gone. One of the biggest concerns that I have about what's going forward, and I applaud what's happened, the county's done a lot of good work and laid good groundwork for moving forward, but the polling, the work with the community determining willingness to pay and support for the project is unlikely to have much enthusiasm for spending a lot of money without a plan that can succeed, and the plan that's on the table appears weak, and is not likely to gain a lot of support. We need a, and I understand that it's not an easy thing to simply increase the amount of. a, and I understand that it's not an easy thing to simply increase the amount of sand. Chris spent a long time today explaining why it's hard. But we need to find a way as a county to put more sand on the beach so that support for it is real and success is assured.
Thank you, Steve. Next speaker. Don, excuse me. Mr. Hamilton.
Good morning, Commissioners. Last time, or good afternoon, sorry. Last time I was here, I made a point
Name, identify yourself.
Sorry. I'm Richard Hamilton. I'm a resident of Island Estates. I, last time I was here, I made a point of congratulating your staff and the work they were doing to protect interests. Today, I sort of feel I have to thank you for going through and trying to make some sense of the details that are going into this project and looking after our interests. I fully support the need for a beach management program because coming down here, I think it was about 35 years ago, two things that struck me coming down from Connecticut were that the A-1A and the road was going so close to the beach. You've got views of the beach, you got access to the beach. Whereas up in Connecticut, you know, that was very limited and a lot of private, private. And the second thing, of course, was the trees lining our roads. We didn't have apartment buildings and things back 35 years ago. Looking over the weekend at the upcoming plan, the, not the strategic plan, the comprehensive plan, and the new website that you've got up there with surveys and comments and things, which is an excellent website. And we've got our meetings coming up. But it struck to me that those factors that drew, that attracted me to Flagler County 35 years ago were part of our comprehensive plan. I guess we have one dated about 2010 that's just going to be updated for a period which I probably won't survive. I'll be up there like Mr. Erickson, smiling down at you. But what's important to notice is that in the old comprehensive plan, you had a coastal management section. It had references to the need for a beach management plan, which we're now getting around to. But also, equal important to me is the protection of the A-1A. And I was interested to hear Mr. Creed talk about the, the merging now of resiliency projects with beach management projects. And I think that's important for us to remember is that this beach management plan, although we talk about dunes and so on, still doesn't fully address resiliency, and particularly the need to defend the A-1A. Whether that's going to end up with a seawall project or whatever, I don't, I don't know. But that's, there's still more money that's not part of this plan that is going to be needed. Both, we're obviously working at in Flagler Beach, but there's still sections all the way up to, up in two Hammock Dunes, and then from Marineland North. So we may need two separate programs, a beach management program and a, A-1A resiliency program. So I just wanted to make that point that this isn't just the answer to everything.
Thank you, Richard. Next speaker. See a known approach, a closed public comment. Can you address Mr. Davis's comment? Because I thought we were putting 25 cubic yards of sand.
Yes, sir. And, and it's a good point made. This is an assumption that is based upon what we have learned in the past from our analysis in the past and what we thought. And it does distribute, if you get back to the beach management study, I don't know if we can get the slides back up, but can we get the slides back up possibly? Oh, there we go. Yeah, here we go. Let's go to, let's go to the alternatives. Let's go to these guys. And this is, again, the fill density analysis that we did. And we, these were assumptions based upon what we thought might happen, where yellow is larger density and the green, lightest green is, is 44 cubic yards per foot to six cubic yards per foot. And we were tapering them through the northern part of the county. And the reason we did that is we, the further north you go, the more rock you get. Clearly, and there's also the assumption of the more sand you place, the more risk of impacting hard bottom. So to answer the question about more sand, we'll come out through the design process of exactly what is needed. And we will need to compensate for what has been lost through the most recent storms.
Sure.
The cost will go up. I mean, it, it's directly proportional to the, the total cost is going to be to the amount of sand you place. And so we're, I think, based upon Mr. Davis's comments, it, maybe we could take another look at another option and say, okay, what if we double the, the amount of sand that we're going to place in the northern part of the county? And it's almost like Option Six down here, we were replacing 44 through the whole northern part of the county. Then the question would be, how much rock would you impact with that? Zero or a lot? We just, we don't know at this point.
But you can't do 44 cubic yards up in the northern part of our county. You just can't do it.
Right. Without
There's no room.
There's no room. Right. So, but, but you can do those analyses. And, and I think the, the important part is the bigger we make these projects, the more they will cost. And so there's going to be a balance. The Core's project has increased in scope significantly. They have the opportunity to have access to funding. How they come up with it, sometimes of a mystery, but it's, it's beneficial to Flagler County. And so they, it is really, before it was a little more balanced when we looked at it. The Core putting up to 115 cubic yards per foot now, it makes the northern part look a lot thinner. It's still, but it can be looked at. And again, I think when we look at it from a planning perspective, what is the bulk amount of sand that we're placing? If we double that, what would that cost? And so it's, it gets back down to a cost analysis at this point. Can the county generate enough revenue to represent, to, to, to implement Option A, B, or C? And then we can decide what the scope of A, B, and C might look like, depending upon what the ultimate amount of money is that's available. You've got $41 million available. This is a good head start in the northern part of the county. But it looks, in order for us to implement a much more robust project, even in the initial project, it's going to take more money.
But it seems to me that we're, we're looking at, the northern part of the county, you're not going to be able to put a lot of sand up there. You're just not. You can, you're going to, you're going to make the dune thicker
And higher.
On, going west, not going east. You're not going to be able to put, because it's a solid rock. Soon as you, soon as the dune starts, it's rock. So you're not going to be able to put any sand on the beach. So it's all going to have to be landward of the, of the beach. So it's, it's not the same, same argument where you have to put enough sand where the wave action will actually create a beach and like we're doing it with the Core. We're, we're not doing that kind of a sand placement. We're just building the dune a little thicker.
And, and that's exactly right. And that's why in this analysis for Option Seven, I thought it was important to talk about a six-year renourishment interval. If you can't build a big, wide, robust project, you just have to maintain it more frequently. And so maybe the, maybe we find out that when we, if we don't, we are going to be limited by what we can place up there, but we just have to maintain it more frequently.
Yeah. But I would opine that up in the northern section, where we just have to put sand that you're not going to have to replenish probably every six years. There probably no need to replenish at all.
In some of the areas, that could be true. It's been a long time. Flagler County was stable for a long time.
Yeah.
And so particularly behind the rock north of Washington Oaks, and that's where the initial project and the future, these are assumptions. And so you, you have to monitor these projects, see how they behave, and you adjust your, your, your plans moving forward based upon that information. It's all part, it's all part of a long-term plan.
Yeah.
A follow-up?
Yes.
There was a comment made about the historical reference to the hard bottom. What do we have that shows historically the condition of the hard bottom? And do we have any?
Not, not much. There's some photography. We've looked at some old photography. There's never been a physical survey of it. It hasn't been exposed. I mean, there was some there and as we all know, at Washington Oaks, but it's much more expansive now than it has been historically. We've, and, and that would be part of the permitting process. We would attempt to show two things. One, it's recent growth in terms of scope, with whatever information we have available, which is probably going to be aerial photography. But we, you also need to demonstrate that it's ephemeral, that it does come and go. And that has less value than something that's permanent from a biological perspective. We just don't really understand it in a quantum, I mean, there's anecdotal observations and, and anybody who goes to the beach has that. But when you get into the regulatory setting, you have to have specific information so that a regulator can issue a permit with what they, what they term reasonable assurance that it is not going to have a negative impact. So that's our job when we go through the regulatory processes, give them the information to help them make their decisions.
Andy, when I went to FDP, I, I made the argument that those rocks were not there. Granted anecdotal, but they, I, I used the phrase, God uncovered them, so let us cover them back. And they agreed to that, but not very far, up to Jungle Hut, they agreed. So if we can get farther north, maybe we can. I don't think so.
I like building big beaches. I would, I mean, I, I think the county should, because big beaches offer the most protection. And I've just, I've lived this in my career, lots of times being very frustrated by some of the decision-making on the regulatory side and kind of, I don't know if they've beaten me down or what they've done to me, but I kind of understand the realities of what we're facing. But still, I think there's the investigations to quantify what it is and what, you know, how valuable it is, is important. Those are important studies. And then we make decisions from there.
Yeah. But if we want big beaches, which I think we all really do, it'd be nice to have Jungle Hut and Malacampera and Bay Drive and all just have a big, nice beach out there. Then we're going to have to mitigate, you know.
And there could be areas among the rock where, like where, say we were to find gap, I mean, I'm totally speculating. Let's just have a conversation, that we find where there's a gap. Or we could build feeder beaches in those gaps, where we build bigger beaches there that can, that can spread to feed the other areas. There, there are things, techniques that we can use, but we really are not going to be able to explore those until we know more about what we have.
Is the next step for us is to, is to actually convene a hard bottom study? Is that something we need to do like right now?
That would be recommended.
And who would do that? You do that?
Uh, we don't know. There's, you could do it. We, you could do it through my contract, I think. But it, they're, they're consultants. It's a physical part and a, and a biological part. So that you do it with remote sensing techniques. We do it with aerial photography, LiDAR surveys, and then they do side scan bottom, side scan surveys, which is underwater. And you map it from the water side and the, the beach side. And then the biologists will go out following the physical, once we delineate the scope of it, where it's located, they go out and what they call characterize it. What is it? What's growing on it? What types of things live there?
Yeah, that scared me when I saw the report on that at the last beach management study. They did it with, there's a person swimming with a scuba tank.
That's right. And they'll have to have divers on this one as well.
Sounds expensive.
Just before we get away from the, the money and all that, we kind of, I think, are in agreement, at least from what you've said and I've said, it, we're not just going to do the 11.6. The, the county is going to have responsibility for all 18 miles.
Yeah.
So that would increase the costs for the, not the initial one, but, but anything beyond the initial. So even the costs that you've shown that are, you know, estimates and all that
Be higher.
Would be higher.
Yes. That's correct.
I maintain that it's going to be higher no matter what, because we're going to have to pay for the Flagler Beach anyway.
That's my point.
Yeah.
So, so I'm, I'm just saying, the numbers that were presented, if we're saying we're not going to eliminate Flagler Beach from our, you know, study, like they were saying for Option Seven, it's going to be more, more money. So where are we, I'm, I'm trying to, I'm, I'm a little confused about, when do we approve the beach management study? Or what do we have to do today? Do we have to pick an option? Or do we say, keep going? Or I'm, I'm a little confused about what you want us to do as a, as a board.
Could, could I have a comment on that?
Yeah, go ahead.
If you, if you go back to some of the things, because you're not going to have answers in order to, I think, go implement Option Seven. Option Seven is to help kind of understand the scope and scale of what you might want to do. But I think beach management plans that I have seen are typically more high-level type directives to, to the community. Like right now, we, we don't know how much money you can generate. We don't, your goals right here will be to, you know, restore. So point number two is, is a recommendation that you want to embrace the idea of replacing and maintaining sand. You're not going to go down the structure path of putting groins down. That's going to, that would never, you as a community, we want to be in the beach restoration and renourishment program of maintaining our beach and dune system. That's point number two. And point number three is we want to maximize the amount of sand. You know, a goal is, let's go put as much sand within the resources we have and the constraints that we have to do that. That's an objective. And then you, then you put the burden back on the, the staff, staff to go implement that strategy. That, that's the way I see it, as opposed to being specific of, I want to adopt. And I'm not telling you, those are just, but what I've seen, it's not been that specific.
Okay, Mr. Trump. Okay. Simple question. When can I say, okay, we have an approved beach management plan? Because you keep saying we don't have
We don't have one.
Approved beach management plan. So is that six months from now? Is it today? Is it, I mean, what's, what do we think about that?
Well, I think if I just heard Chris correctly, and that the, the beach management plan is kind of, I don't want to use the term boilerplate, but it's a lot of that. Just to establish our thoughts and what we think a beach management plan should be, and does not get down to exactly how much sand you're going to put in this stretch of beach, correct?
That is
That's not a, our beach management plan says, here's our intent. This is what we want to do.
That's your intent, right.
This is what we want to do. So let's write the damn thing. We can do that. And then, and then get that written with, and I, I like all your action items here, that those all should be in there. And then, and then get on with the, the hard bottom study so we know, we know what it's going to take.
And it can be refined. Once we start, once we get into that, you give initial directions. Here's what we're interested in doing. We are going to support it from a local funding perspective. That's an important thing. We're, you know, you're, you're determined to do that. As things, as the project starts to evolve, I've seen other communities adopt, hey, we want to make sure that the beach is at least 200 fight, 200 feet wider than this particular baseline. But they don't necessarily do that at the very beginning. That, that evolves over time. So once you get a, you may come back to the table once a project is built, or when the goals are better understood in terms of specifics, and amend it to do something like that. But really what you need, I think the most important thing right now is getting your hands around this idea. You got to generate local revenue and do as much as you can with the money that you can generate.
And, and we need to get the joint, the JCP, the joint
Get the JCP going.
We got to get that permit going. So that when that dredge is here, hopefully, we can at least get as far as Jungle Hut, I would think, at least.
I, I, I'm going to throw this out. I don't think that's going to be possible
Okay.
If the Core stays on their schedule, you're going to have
They're going to have to go away. Okay. All right. So it's going to be another 4.7 million to get the dredge back.
Possibly. Hopefully we get a better deal, but we'll see. Yeah. And so you're, you know, you're, those directives are moving forward. Things that are, other things that could change could be, what's the, if the Core goes and does their feasibility study, and they completely change the entire scope of what they want to do with a recommendation, then you could come back and amend it and say, hey, we're going to expand our relationship with the Core. And we're going to change how we're going to do business moving forward from there. But right now, I think it's important for the county from a beach manager perspective, hey, we are moving forward in this direction. We want to do all 18 miles. We're going to try to get as much money as we can. We're going to get permits. We're going to expand the dredging project as far north as we can. We're going to make it as big as we possibly can within the funding and regulatory constraints we have. And we're going to see, and then we're going to keep moving. But it's, it's important to get started and, 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 and make some of those decisions so that the funding can be available to support this. And it's easy for, hey, we're, we're going to fund this because this is what we've, as a board have, you know, tasked everyone to do here, and we're going to fund this activity.
You good?
I'm okay.
Good. All right, let's write the damn thing.
We'll get started.
Okay.
I wish we were already started, but
Yeah. Let's get started on that. Okay. Any other comments? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So you have one other item? We're going to talk about City of Flagler Beach, the collaborative joint
No, I'm sorry. I didn't see that. I'm sorry. City of Flagler Beach Collaborative Group Discussion.
I've got a list.
Well, you are representative there.
So I mean, if you want me to start, I can't, nobody else is scheduled to start.
Go ahead.
Okay. We received, we had a meeting, the first meeting on July 27th. Leanne Pennington was there, Andy was there.
LeAnn Pennington was there, Andy was there, Heidi was there, a couple other people, to try to get things going. And the objective is, the City of Flagler Beach feels that they need more support. They, a lot of the people who come to the county as visitors or what, or people who live here, they use Flagler Beach to go to the beach. And therefore, they feel that, not necessarily financial support, but just support in general, maybe we don't understand the significance of what the, the impact on Flagler Beach there is from, from outsiders, whether it's from in the county or outside the county coming there. But I won't go into all that, because that was, that was pretty well explained at the thing. In their most recent message on August 9th that we brought up, they have listed topics for discussion at the next meeting. So I thought I could just quickly go through those.
What? It's on screen.
Right. And, and make a couple of comments, and then we have a discussion about it. Do we want to continue to talk about these? Okay, first, half-cent small county discretionary sales tax. I, I think we have made an attempt on that to a degree, not formally, but it looks like that's not going to happen this year. In our budget process, we've kind of said we're, we're probably, that'll be handled as a separate issue at some point in the future. And I think we're at the point where it's probably not going to happen during this budget cycle. If that's not true, somebody tell me, and we can continue to discuss it.
Well, I think we've discussed it a lot, and I don't see four votes. That's my concern.
And we're the ones that would have to vote it in.
Yeah, it's our four, it's our four votes, I don't see four votes.
So do we want to continue to discuss that at the next meeting?
I think so.
From our perspective?
I think so.
You say yes?
Yeah.
Okay.
To what degree?
Just to bring it up again, just to let everybody get a sense, is there a chance we can pass this, or no? I don't know.
Well, I mean, doesn't, at this point, doesn't make sense talking with them about it if it's not passing us. I mean, we're just continuing a discussion. I think we, at some point, there could be a regrouping of it, but it's not, it's not now.
Okay.
I don't see it.
You don't see it? Okay. All right, no.
Well, I may just, no, I agree with Andy's comments on that one.
Okay, don't bring it up again.
Okay.
Okay.
From our perspective, somebody else may bring it up.
Somebody else bring it up.
Okay, the, the survey of beach users to determine use of beach statistics. Now, they're talking about a new survey. I did talk to Amy, she's here. We've done a lot of work in the, in the Tourist Development Council on this, and I looked at a briefing that has already been prepared, and Amy's willing to give us like two pages, maybe about, about it, just quickly, that I could hand out and say, this is what we know now. We've already spent money, and this is what we know now. There may be some other issues that they want to bring up, but we've already done a lot of work on-
Is this a survey to see which beaches people use? Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, well, let Amy explain what we, what we know now, and see if we want to, how far we want to go beyond this.
Amy Lukasik. The survey was not that specific, it was to, to data points that Commissioner Sullivan is referring to. In 2020, we surveyed in general visitors all along our beaches of their top activities. Eighty-two percent said they participated in a beach activity, 75% dined at locally-owned restaurants, 62% participated in outdoor recreation, 37% in water recreation. We then asked, what are the top areas that you visited within the county? Eighty percent Flagler Beach, 43% Palm Coast, 29% Hammock Beach area, 10% Beverly Beach, 7% Vanel.
So I thought that's a good start, and I, I would like to know what are the other data points that they would get from a survey? We don't want to start from scratch, is my point.
Mm-hmm.
We have-
We have.
We have a foundation.
Yeah, okay.
So that, I thought a two-page handout with that data on it would be our input.
Yeah.
Okay. And any, somebody can pipe in, the next one was expansion of lifeguard coverage to the north and south. That, that is a critical issue, and a lot of work's been gone into, or you know, Mr. Chairman, I mean, why we just go north and south? Why don't we go to Bay Drive Beach? Or why don't, you know, in other words, I don't think this is a simple expansion one way or the other, and there's already ILA essentially agreement of how much of the lifeguard costs we pay and how much the City of Flagler Beach pays. And that's an agreement that's in existence right now.
Yeah, I would think the expense involved in that would be remarkable.
So that would be-
You'd have to put lifeguards at Malacampera, is that what you're saying, Malacampera?
Well, they're not saying that. There's, I think they're saying extend it from, what's it, 10 blocks? I, I forget the exact number.
Oh, just in Flagler Beach?
Yeah.
Oh.
The only place we have lifeguards is Flagler Beach, as far as I know.
Right, that's the only place.
And-
Do you think that's what they're talking about? Just Flagler Beach?
That's probably what they're talking about. I mean, I don't know that if, if they want to pull beach users away from the downtown corridor-
That's kind of what they want to do, yeah.
I mean, will, will beach users follow the lifeguards? If you put one up at Bay Drive Park or Malacampera, would they follow where the lifeguards are? I don't know.
Well, I think we could expand just the Flagler Beach area. I know we go a lot farther north with lifeguards.
But that would be more money from us, probably.
Probably more money from us, yeah.
And I don't have, we, we already have an agreement on that, so I'd be interested to hear what they're, what they want to do on that, I don't know.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Removing the toll from the Hammock Dune Bridge, what that's about is expanding the ability of people to get to the beach, different routes. I think we talked about that, Mr. Chairman, already, and you said that, that it's in your area, that they already are trying to improve the intersection-
Yeah.
-on the, on the east side of the bridge. And so there is some movement to make that easier, but we're not talking yet about tolls and things like that. We're, we're talking just about improving the traffic flow on the east side of the bridge. Does that make sense? Is that where we're-
Yeah, we don't have a control over the toll.
Right.
And I don't, I'm talking to Greg Pugh, they-
Well, you did, yeah.
Yeah, they don't have any desire to stop.
So that's the status on that, is there, there is some work being done on the intersection, though.
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I don't see the need to continue that discussion on the tolls.
Not at all, no.
If you want to talk about the, the, you know, the traffic flow and the safety improvements, that's one thing, but I think-
They need that toll money to-
Yeah.
For greatness.
Yeah, so, so then the next, do they say, construction of new high-rise bridge? Okay, we can talk about it, but there's nothing in the works right now, there's nothing in writing on building another bridge at the northern part of the county to go to-
You look at where they want to put it, and that's like a non-starter.
So I, I don't think we want to bring that one up.
No.
Stronger emphasis on ecotourism through creation of new parks. We support ecotourism, there's a lot of work going on, on that. Our, our trail system is being, we're connecting now with the pedestrian bridge, and we could talk about the ecotourism center that we're, we're supporting at this point. I think you have other thoughts on that one.
About it?
Sir, if I could, excuse me, you can probably also talk about the design currently underway with Bulo, more of a regional park, ties kind of into that ecotourism. And if I could just go back to the bridge discussion, I did invite Greg Pugh to come to your September 6th board meeting to provide an update to you about some of those safety improvements and enhancements for that intersection there.
Okay, well, that would be good, we'd be, update there. Freshwater recreational marketing, that's-
And we don't do any of that.
Well, in our parks.
We need to, we could advertise our parks more, I guess.
I think that's more the overall park plan, right? That we're, the big comprehensive plan we're doing on improvement of the parks and all that, that's been briefed to you recently.
Yeah.
I think it's more about just expanding the other opportunities within the county-
Sure.
Other than the beach.
Other than, other than the beach.
Right.
It goes somewhere else other than the beach.
I looked at that one, I, I understand this connection back to Flagler Beach, but I didn't see that was really a Flagler Beach issue.
Well, get people away from the beach.
But, but, okay, okay. As we go through these, I'll explain when I'm, my point there. Increased marketing in existing parks and trail systems, yeah, I think that's, I think we, I think the Tourist Development Office does a pretty good job on brochures and websites and analysis. I, I, I don't know what increased marketing would be on that, other than what we do. I mean, maybe Palm Coast could do more, that kind of thing. I, I don't, maybe Amy has some thoughts on that, but I-
I would also say it's increased pursuit of grants that are available for expanding the interconnected parts of our trail system. I know we've had our master plan process in place, but there's additional funding that's been implemented just the past year on, on the Sun Network and others. I think we just need to continue to look at those grant opportunities to expand.
Sure, like we could establish these trailheads, you know, that, we have a few that need to be done. Restaurant facilities and all that, yeah, we need, we need some grants to do that.
I think paid parking is a City of Flagler Beach issue.
Well, and it's a, it's a problem issue, too. You start charging to park along the beach there, then people are going to start parking in the neighborhoods. And then you're going to have to have stickers for everybody's car that's legal to park in the neighborhoods. So, I mean, it's just rolls and rolls and rolls, you get more problems.
Yeah, does, does, anybody else have thoughts?
I've seen it happen.
I, I don't have a lot of thoughts on that. I think they've looked at it in Flagler Beach. I don't know if there's a new push to have more paid parking there. I think when they've looked at it in the past, I see, Kim is out in the, the audience, it was, it was voted down, as far as I remember.
Yeah, yeah, it was.
Shuttles, satellite parking, trolleys.
Yeah, all that. But I don't, I don't know of any specific, well, there was something about, some kind of like a taxi service that they, I, we got briefed on the other day. I, I'll let, I'll let them lead that discussion. I don't think that's the discussion we're going to lead.
We don't need, yeah.
Right. Affordable housing, well, we have the Live Local Act. That would be example of one, I think, that that's a problem we all have. It's not specific to Flagler Beach.
Yeah, Flagler Beach.
And then State Road A1A traffic flow during emergency response and recovery, recovery operations. I, I thought that was pretty well-defined.
Yeah, everybody brings that up, and, and we have a good plan. We can, we can evacuate the entire Outer Banks in six and a half hours, start to finish. Time to evacuate, six and a half hours later, they're all gone.
Yeah, and I-
You know, we can do that.
And I think that's-
We have a plan to do that.
Yeah, our emergency management system is good.
He's got a, he's got four binders, four inches thick on how to do it.
So do we need to ask someone to come and brief that at the-
Yeah, we could have Jonathan come, yeah.
Do we, sure.
Yeah.
So maybe have a briefing on that, okay.
Yeah.
Who would do, who would do that one?
Jonathan.
Jonathan should do it, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
That comes up all the time.
Yep.
It's really, it's really not an issue.
Well, those are the items, those are the items that they have come forward, so now we're looking for anything else you would like to add to the discussion.
Things we want to add.
Right, we're, our, our part.
The only thing I can think of is joint planning, especially in the Roberts Road corridor, where we have the three different municipalities, our government, Flagler Beach and Palm Coast, all at a, at that junction. So I think there needs to be an increased effort of, from a growth management, planning perspective, that we all understand the issues going on there.
We could probably include the Veranda Beach, just right across 100 on, you know, and on-
Right, that's within our jurisdiction.
It's within, but they're trying to, city's trying to annex it, so. Flag, that old Flagler Beach is not, does not, is not happy about that.
No, but I do think that, that 100 Roberts Road-
Yeah.
-intersection there, and there's building going in, new, new car wash, veterinarian office and so on.
Well, I guess the City of Palm Coast called it a village, some type of village center, or some, recent developments have-
Yeah.
Put additional focus on that area.
Yeah, worthwhile discussion, yeah.
And that goes right along with the one, the single 100 bridge going into Flagler Beach, it's all connected right there. So would that be a TPO kind of thing, or?
I mean, that's one part of it, but it's, I think it's just making sure that we stay on top of the issues that, right, infrastructure first.
Anything else?
You're so far over that. Well, I'm, I was thinking about this expansion, they want us to move, try to move people north.
Right, and that was the reason to look at the toll bridge.
But you listen, you listen to the statistics that Amy read off, and what does Flagler Beach have that, that Malacampera, Bay Drive, 16th Street? What do they have that those parks don't have? They have restaurants.
Restaurants.
Bars, entertainment. I brought up with the Friends of A1A, why don't we, why don't you let us put a restaurant at Malacampera? I thought I was going to get shot, so.
It's like the toll bridge, you know, try, there's certain things that, you know, may happen at some point in the future, but-
Yeah, I know. Ms. Petito, any other comments?
No, I'll, I'll make note of that, the joint planning, Roberts Road, Colbert, State Road 100, impacts to infrastructure due to growth. The only other comment or question that they had, I don't know if you all have a preference, when Penny Overstreet originally reached out, she proposed the two dates, September 13th and September 20th, they're both Wednesdays. We don't believe that there are any meetings for any government entities on Wednesday. Preference, I don't know if there is a preference between the two, but we can certainly share that if you guys have a preference.
They want to have two meetings?
No, they proposed two dates, 13th and the 20th of September as the two.
The 13th was the first day of the FAC Policy Conference, but I'm not going to be attending the first day, so I'll be available.
Yeah, I got to look at the schedule of that.
And if we want to rotate people-
There's no restriction on who goes to these meetings, it's just-
Well, when your policy-
Myself and LeAnn were, were, were there, but it's, there's, there's good reason for any of us to be there.
Yeah.
And if we, I mean, I'm game to step in if we want to do a rotation, so.
Yeah, are they limiting it just to representatives from our commission?
The last meeting, they had limited it to two. I think they talked at that time about, would it be the remaining two all the time? I don't know if the topics change, if it impacts who would be there. Certainly, you can attend, it's just whether or not you have a seat at the table to talk.
So it's, remains two, okay.
Two, mm-hmm.
All right.
Well, you know, that was it.
Well, Andy, do you want to go? Do you want to be one of the two?
Sure, yes, I, I mean, I can add a lot to the, to the ecotourism discussion, the planning discussions.[1680.66]
planning discussion.
Okay, you and Dave.
Okay.
You and Dave, okay.
In my district, so, it makes sense, and, and I do think that there may be some good come out of it.
Yeah.
It was always, always, we'll see.
Yeah, okay. Donnie, do you have anything else to talk about? Anything I have? Andy, anything?
Okay, thank you, sir.
I'm done.
You're done, okay, and then I'll-
Tomorrow we have Charlie, right?
Charlie tomorrow, 10 o'clock. Yeah, we're gonna have a service tomorrow here in chambers for Charlie tomorrow at 10 o'clock. It's open to anybody who wants to attend. And I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Did you wanna say something, Amy? Amy-
Amy?
Kind of a public, kind of-
Don't be shy.
Thank you, Amy Lukasik. As I was sitting back there, I just remembered when you're talking about data and surveys, so about 30, 45 days ago, we recently signed up for a data platform, and it's geographically collecting data. And what we were able to do is to give the vendor about 25 points of interest in the county, and this is collected from cell phone data. And we're able to, we gave the vendor 25 points of interest. So, understanding the challenges that we have, we specifically put the parking lots in Flagler Beach, because I know there's conversation about, people maybe don't know that the parking lots are there. So what, the purpose of putting them is to monitor efforts to see, are we making improvements with more people parking in the parking lot? We also did all county beach parks access, we did the Flagler Beach Boardwalk specific, and we also did the Flagler Beach CRA, we did parks, we did historical sites, we did the sports complex, the auditorium, all the major points of interest. And I believe we can go back a years, maybe two, but it's also for the future, so we can measure our efforts, because we do wanna focus more on the ecotourism. So if we're able to see, okay, if we specifically say the entrance to Waterfront Park to ride the trails, how many of those cell phones are from out of county and residents, and then they're also able to collect time at site. So if, if someone stayed more than one hour, two hours, we're able to gauge that. I haven't, it's a lot of data, and I haven't taken the time yet to dive completely into it, but I can certainly try to get as much of that for the September meeting, so that, again, that'll just add to the data shared earlier.
Yeah, that's good, thank you, that'd be really good.
In other words, I don't wanna start expensive surveys-
No, we already have it.
-based on this, when we've done a pretty good job already on that.
It's a starting point.
Yeah, exactly.
Already paid for.
It'd even help our beach management study, right? You'll be able to tell where people are going to the beach, and how many are going, and all that kind of thing.
Yep.
Okay.
Move to adjourn.
We're adjourned, thank you. Thank you all for coming, appreciate the audience.